Good evening and welcome to the February 6, 2017 Board of Commissioners Meeting. The Reverend, the Pastor Glenn McCraney has been kind enough to come and give us the invocation and a pledge of allegiance if you would all rise.
Let us pray. Oh God, some people don't like lard due to high cholesterol. Some don't like the taste of buttermilk. Some don't like flour for what makes them sneeze. But oh God, yet together they make a great biscuit. Tonight we come from different personal backgrounds, different purposes for our attendance tonight. We blend together as a group to express our concerns freely and to exercise our right to participate in a free assembly. We meet tonight due to the great sacrifices of others who are willing to serve rather than being served. We pray for your blessings upon us and upon our elected officials. May we listen openly to the opinions of others, share our own faults and convictions as we participate as free Americans. May your Holy Spirit bless our elected officials as they have the heavy responsibilities of leading our historical county. May their focus always be upon the enrichment and betterment of our county. May your protection arms be with our law enforcement personnel from harm as they chose to protect and defend us by their service. Ride along with them in these troubling and chaotic times. With the present national and world conditions, in these times, we turn to you for our strength and your mercy. When we are weak, you are strong. May we stay, we are, some say we are chasing after an impossible dream with our personal religious experience. May we never fear nor hesitate to proclaim you as our Lord and all God's people say, "Amen." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you Pastor Glenn. First item this evening is the approval of the agenda.
Motion for approval.
If I may, I need to make one change to the agenda. We will put it under new business, item B, and that would be a resolution of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners supporting construction of the Mid-Currituck Bridge and its continued inclusion in the State Transportation Improvement Plan.
Motion for approval with that inclusion.
Thank you.
Second.
Any more discussion? Any more changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Next item is public comment. I do not have anyone signed up for public comment. Is there anyone that has come in late? Okay, moving on. Under administrative reports, discussion regarding the Americans with Disabilities Act training for county departments. Mr. Scanlon, if you could speak to that please.
Yes sir, I'd be glad to. Mr. Chairman of the Board, I think we're all aware now that about two weeks ago we had a unfortunate occurrence that happened at one of our county facilities where the county staff was not as versed as they should be in the Americans with Disabilities Act, and we didn't handle the situation with the level of respect and care that we should have. And so with that, we have had an opportunity to have a conversation with both the county attorney, we've had a conversation with a representative from the Department of Justice for the Americans with Disabilities Act to learn what our obligations are to the public. We tend to get focused on these areas and talk about the employer or employee relationship as it relates to the ADA, and we have not been as strong as it relates to our responsibility to the general public. So tomorrow we have our standing department head meeting, and I will be relating to them the findings that the Department of Justice has shared with us. We have also reached out to, we have a legal firm that has been conducting training for county staff and department heads for quite some time. We've reached out to them, they have somebody on staff that is versed in ADA, and we have scheduled a mandatory training for all supervisors and department heads. It is scheduled for April 21st where they will be on site and we'll have a half-day training on the responsibilities of ADA as it applies to the county when we welcome the general public into any of our facilities. So hopefully with this, we will be better prepared and more responsible when these things arise, and that we can have a more respectful and appropriate outcome when we have these interactions in the future. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions the board might have.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Having none, we'll move on to the public hearing. PB 16-17, Hyman Conditional rezoning, request for conditional rezoning of 4.01 acres of, from general business to C MXR, conditional mixed residential on Moyoc Landing Drive adjoining Currituck House Assisted Living Facility to the east, tax map nine parcel 29T Moyoc Township, and with that I'll hand it over to Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for a rezoning of a parcel on the north side of Moyoc Landing Drive. You can see on the aerial photograph, the subject parcel is highlighted in the blue color. It is located just west of the Assisted Living Facility in Moyoc. On its western boundary, it actually joins the railroad line, and of course you can see Carritoque Highway on this photograph as well. Property is currently zoned general business, and if you look at the map you can see, as is typical in Moyoc, the Carritoque Highway corridor is zoned commercial, but in this instance you can actually see that a pretty significant portion of Phase Two, or all of Phase Two of the Shingle Landing subdivision, including this parcel and the Assisted Living Facility, are zoned general business, which does allow commercial clearly, but also GB zoning allows single-family dwellings, which is why you see the lots that are created there on the aerial photograph. To the north of this you can see a subdivision that was rezoned a few years ago to Conditional District, Single Family Mainland. That subdivision to the north is a little bit smaller lot, higher density subdivision that's connected to the county water and sewer systems. And of course to the south of this, on the other side of Shingle, or south of Shingle Landing Phase Two, you can see more of a traditional one-acre lot subdivision. The land use plan designates this area as full service, and that is, that is not only the Currituck 2006 land use plan, but also the Moyoc Smalleria Plan as well. The full service designation is an area that the county anticipates growth. The county does so because they have infrastructure that's available to service these areas. Kind of the central area of Moyoc along the highway tends to be uniformly designated as full service in our land use plans. This particular tract of land, it's a little difficult to see, but on the left side of that is the railroad track, and of course on the, on the south side of the lower end of this image is Moyoc Landing Drive. So what this request does, this zoning request, it's to rezon to MXR, which is our zoning district that allows single-family dwellings, multifamily attached housing, also allows some very limited commercial uses and office uses. In this particular request, what they're asking for is a 16-unit townhome development, so that would be attached housing. You would have units of basically single, townhomes are essentially single-family dwellings that are attached to other single-family dwellings. So they do allow the option of, they allow an ownership option, they can be rented by one manager of the property, or at some point the individual units can be sold as attached single-family dwellings. It also includes one accessory dwelling unit and 12 detached garages. I think the garages are typically intended for use by residents that may be renting or staying in one of the townhome units. The property is four acres, as I said, so that, that makes this density about four units per acre. In the MXR zoning district, that's the maximum density that's available. This project is proposing to connect to the county water system as well as the county sewer system. In our land use plan, we anticipate that densities of three to four units per acre are permissible in full-service areas, provided they do attach to water and sewer infrastructure, which they're proposing to do. Couple of things about this in terms of just general land use practice, you can see on this tract of land, if you start at the highway, you've got commercial parcels that are, that are fronting the highway, you have the railroad tracks, and then you begin a transition into single-family development, so it would be, if approved, the multifamily or the townhome units, followed by the assisted living, then you move into your more traditional single-family dwellings as you move eastward. That's kind of a typical land use transition. Generally when you're citing multifamily or attached housing projects, they make a lot of sense to exist between commercial and traditional single-family dwellings. So from a, kind of a land use 101, this transition tends to make sense as you move from more intense uses into less intense uses. Another thing that, that staff observes is that since it is located at the front of the neighborhood, a lot of the traffic associated with these multifamily units to get out don't necessarily have to drive through the entire neighborhood, so in some respects you could argue having the multifamily at the back of the neighborhood maybe impacts more of the single-family dwellings when you drive through those areas. Couple other things on this, there's a lot of, lot of history in the Shingle Landing subdivision that's worth, worth noting. One is related to roads. Over the years, we've had a lot of issues and concerns with the maintenance of these roads. It's no fault of the, of the neighborhood, residents that are here, some tonight, and those that live there. But to give the board an update, the roads are currently dedicated for public use, so Moyoc Landing Drive is a publicly dedicated road, but it's currently, it's owned or managed by the developers, so the CTX Development Group actually manages the road. One of the things that's been discussed over the years is getting those roads taken over by the state, because obviously from the Homeowners Association, you'd rather not have to manage roads because that can be expensive, you'd rather have the state manage those. Well, one of the big barriers to that in the past has been the railroad crossing. There's a railroad crossing there, and currently there's an agreement between the developer, CTX, and the railroad to allow Moyoc Landing Drive to basically cross the railroad and allow these residents access to get in and out. And what that's required is a private agreement, is the developer every year has to pay a fee and renew that agreement. The DOT has been working on this for years. I was going to say it feels like years, but it actually has been years they've worked on this, but there is movement on that. I've got an email from the, from the DOT back in November where the railroad company, the railroad companies, there's multiple companies have finally agreed to allow the DOT to take over maintenance of that railroad crossing, which is a positive thing. So there is an agreement that's been executed between the DOT, kind of the Raleigh Office and the Rail Division, and the railroads to allow that crossing to move forward and eventually become part of the state system. The next step in that road process is the DOT, the local division engineer and staff have to come out and inspect the roads to make sure they're up to standard, because the DOT won't take the roads over, which includes a crossing now, until the roads are up to standard. The staff, the planning staff has communicated with DOT officials, and they are planning to inspect the subdivision this week. So hopefully if everything goes well, we are in the process of getting these roads finally taken over by the state, which would reduce some of the maintenance burden that would fall upon, otherwise fall upon the Homeowners Association. The county does hold a performance guarantee in place from the developer, so if there are issues with the roads that need to be improved for the state to accept those, the county will rely upon either the developer to make those improvements, or the county can call the performance guarantee and make the improvements to get it where it needs to be. The other thing that's changed since, over the years, is there's a subdivision to the north of this Hidden Oaks, and one to the south Moyoc Crossing. Both of those are under construction now, and a part of those subdivisions is connecting to Moyoc Landing Drive, so when those subdivisions are done, you'll have a road to the north that connects to Baxter Land, Baxter Lane, and you'll also have a road that connects to the south, the Shingle Landing Road. So my point is, in addition to the crossing that hopefully will be managed by DOT, there'll be two, two additional ways to get out of the Shingle Landing subdivision and not rely solely upon the railroad crossing. That's a lot of information, but we've, but those that have been on the board for many years know we've, we've talked about this railroad crossing for probably eight or nine years now. So it's finally moving forward. I think that's relevant because you have a request tonight to add additional residential units to the road, and I think we need to know where that stands. And lastly, couple of things about multifamily. It is connecting to the water and sewer system, it isn't a full-service area, the proposal is. The county has design standards that are in place, we have some requirements for how the multifamily looks. It's got to have recreation amenities, it's got to have sidewalk connectivity, so a lot of the things that you would associate with multifamily development, or townhomes in this case, is required by the ordinance. They have submitted an elevation, and this is just kind of a feel for what I think the project will look like. One of the things that the staff is recommending is that these elevations be incorporated into your approval to make sure that the quality of the construction, if this project is approved, would reflect what you see before you tonight.
Bless you.
So with all that, the TRC, the Technical Review Committee, is recommending approval of this request because we find that it is consistent with the Currituck County land use plan, both the 2006 land use plan and the Moyoc Smalleria Plan. Staff also finds that it's reasonable in the public interest in terms of its location and proximity to the highway and other existing residential neighborhoods. The planning board also heard this request, and they too recommended approval of this conditional zoning request. The planning board added, incorporated three conditions into their approval. One, that the outstanding TRC comments be addressed. Two, that the development will consist of a 16-unit townhome development with one accessory dwelling unit and 12 detached garages. And three, that the architectural rendering of the, rendering of the townhomes be incorporated into this approval and units constructed accordingly. And one thing about those conditions is in order those to become part of the final approval, should it be approved, the conditions have to be agreed upon by the board and the applicant as well, so when the applicant comes forward, I would suggest making sure they do agree with those three conditions. And lastly, one thing about conditional zonings is the conceptual development plans. The plan you see here, while not a site plan, it is binding. If this, if this is approved tonight, this plan becomes part of the approval, so when the TRC reviews this rezoning, when they bring in the engineer documents, we'll refer back to this drawing to make sure it's consistent with that. Additionally, if you incorporate the elevations into the approval, those two will be part of what the TRC reviews. So with that, I can answer any questions the board has.
Then I have just, some, I think there's going to be four units in there that are going to be weekly rentals that was proposed, or for, for the individual condos or townhomes would be short-term rentals or something?
There, there could be, that's not specified in the application, so it's possible, I mean...
I thought I read it in the applicant, or at some point here. It was the planning board.
I think the application just says one.
But, yeah, but to, to answer your question in terms of...
One accessory dwelling.
In terms of short-term rental, that's, that's allowable, no different than, for example, a house on, on the beach is rented for a week. The key is that it continues to be maintained as principally a single-family dwelling.
That was my question, that's it. Yep, thank you.
Mr. Woody, I have a question. Is this going to be similar to what we've approved or what is being done around the Kilmarlik entrance and at Mr. Bebo's place in the south end of the county? Is, I mean, is it somewhat same concept?
It is, it is the same concept. It's probably more similar to the University Park project, because that project you actually have buildings of between three and five units or townhomes that are connected, so it probably more resembles that. The Kilmarlik project actually is freestanding cottage homes that are surrounded by open space, but it's the same kind of approach in that it's just a, a different type of housing stock that, that will be made available to our, to our public. This will be, I believe, one of the first projects of attached housing we'll have in the north end of the county, if it's approved.
Mr. Woody, I have one other question. As far as the Homeowners Association, will this development be incorporated into the HOA?
I think this development will establish their, their own HOA that'll be related to their particular property. I don't believe that this project will be part of the Shingle Landing Phase One and Phase Two HOA.
Thank you.
Well, that begs another question, then. Is HOA paying for the road from 168 across railroad tracks to this structure, the maintenance?
Right, right now, the, the roads are still...
Or the builder, the developer.
Under the developer, but yes, at some point when those road, if, if the roads transferred to the HOA, yeah, they would be responsible for the maintenance.
Okay.
And your, your thoughts on the road being switched over to DOT, you're pretty optimistic?
I, I think it's a positive, and I can't tell you today that when it's going to happen that it, it will, I don't want to say, but I feel like I've got correspondence between the county staff and the state, and I think everybody at the state and county level want to see this happen. And you've got to remember also that the county owns a tract of land on Moyoc Landing Drive, a 24, 25 acre piece that we're proposing a park for, so it's also in the county's interest as a part of this community to have the roads taken over by the state, and so we're trying to push that along. And I think with the performance guarantee, the county continues to the hold from the developer, we, we have the ability to make that happen if it needs to be made to happen.
If I can, Mr., if I can, Mr. Miller, or Mr. Hyman, if you'd like to speak on behalf, on behalf of this project.
Be happy to answer any of the questions you have directly. I would like to clarify a question Mr. Commissioner White asked relative to four units being weekly rentals. The intent is not to have four units weekly rentals, so I'm not sure where the misinformation came from. The intent was to have one unit for a weekly rental or a short-term rental. And part of the reason for that is, I'm very active within the community. I'm part of the, I'm the chairman of the Economic Development Board here in Currituck County. Developed various projects all the way from Moyoc, commercial and residential, all the way down through Pasquotan County, and then into Corrala and Corova and whatnot. And in doing so, for instance, the mega-site study with Kimley Horn, when they came to the site here to Currituck County, they couldn't even stay in the county because there's nowhere for them to even stay. There's no apartment for rent, there's no efficiencies. You know, we do have arguably a bed and breakfast or two, but it's hard to find, it's hard to figure that out, and those pieces. We've done a hotel study, we've done other things with that. And this was my way of kind of trying to make a bridge on that, to say, here's an opportunity where, when somebody does have a problem. You know, we had a hurricane, and I know some people that do some work with me and for me, and one lost his house. And right now I was living in a trailer in an RV park while building a new house because there's nowhere for him to even rent within the county. You know, so I said, my wife and I said, you know, this seems like a good opportunity, you know, where people may need something like that short-term. Maybe it's a week, maybe it's two months, those sorts of things. But we do have a real estate company that we'd manage it through, located in Moyoc, our office is there, and that's how we'd handle it and those sorts of things. And we have a lot of people who call us regularly for things for that. You know, whether it's an inspector coming in for Sun Energy, whether it's somebody coming in to do a study on a hotel, whether it's someone coming to meet with, you know, somebody you find, men and women. We just don't have anywhere for them to stay. So that was the whole intent behind it. Nothing more, nothing crazy, you know, but something like that, just something that's furnished that you can stay at. The other 16 units would be available for rent, and they'd be rented, you know, to individuals or families. We just don't have anywhere to do that. And if you talk to people, one of the biggest things is, what's the gap? How do I figure this out? Where do I go? You know, I'm, you know, there's nowhere for me to rent anything, it's very hard to find, it's very find, hard to find a house. So when we looked at this, when we looked at this property and the use of it, we felt it was a good fit, we had a good service district, we have those pieces, and that's kind of how we put it together. If you look at our history and what we do, we do have a habit of doing what we say we're going to do. Look at our other projects, look at the other things we've done, and look at our reputation for those sorts of things. So I'm not perfect, I'll give you my wife's number, if you have any doubt about it, you can call her, she'll tell you all about it. But the truth is that we do try to make things right. So if something isn't right, we'll do our very best to be fair and be right, and be treated the same way anybody else be treated. I live in Moyoc, my kids go to Moyoc schools, you know, so this isn't like I'm doing this in somebody else's backyard and saying, hey, it's, it's okay for me to do it near your house, but not near mine. I live very near there too. So it's, that's kind of what we did, that's where we're looking at in those pieces. We did have a community meeting, we talked about, you know, how can we make this as least impactful, or as favorably impactful as possible? The feedback we had from that meeting was, can you face the houses towards the streets so they look like houses rather than looking at the back of it? And sure, it would have been cheaper for us to put them face-to-face and put one street in between them and make a T in there, but, you know, we said, okay, we can do that, and we can make it so that when you come by, it looks more like residence and houses. And nobody wants to live next to railroad tracks, so, you know, we put garages there as a buffer, one for safety, but also for noise and aesthetics and those sorts of things. So we tried to put some thought into those types of things too. You know, we, we talked about flooding during that meeting, said, you know, how does this relate to our stormwater? And, you know, now are we going to flood more now because you put more houses in? My background, I'm a mechanical engineer, and in doing so, I understand this, the fluids, and I also understand how things flow and move. And when we redesign this, and we do this, if we were to build this, this would be designed as a forested lot, not as a cleared lot. Currently it's a cleared lot. The runoff associated with a forested lot is much, much less than it is with a clear lot, so we have to make up for that through ponds and VMPs and things. And in short, we wouldn't make any flooding worse, we'd actually make it better if any did exist. The other thing we talked about was the roads, and I come up on those things as well. And I told you that I am very active in the county, I work with a lot of different people, I meet with a lot of different people. I happen to know the director for Genesee, Wyoming Railroad. Contacted him because that came about the roads after that meeting we had. And I said, his name is Jason Woods. And I called him, I said, Jason, I said, what, what's the deal with this crossing? And he said, you know, this crossing at Shingle Landing Drive? I said, no, it's Moyoc Landing Drive. He said, oh, that explains something, because we haven't been able to find it for years because it's been identified as Shingle Landing Drive, not Moyoc Landing Drive. I said, yeah, I can take you there. So we went up there, I met with Jason, showed him those pieces. Genesee, Wyoming rents the railroad from Norfolk Southern. Norfolk Southern owns the rails. They rent it to Genesee. That's who actually transfers the cars up and down Elizabeth City and moving things down to Vulcan and back and forth and whatnot. So in doing so, he got in touch with his legal team at Genesee, and then they got in touch with Norfolk Southern and Norfolk Southern's legal team. I also know Randy Midget, because we do subdivisions and things, and we have subdivisions that we've had roads transferred over that are currently state-maintained roads now and subdivisions we've built. And in doing so, I said to Randy, I said, what's the issue? He said, well, we're hung up on this paperwork thing. So Randy Midget, district engineer, Jason Woods, director of the railroad, Norfolk Southern, and them together. I spoke with Jason today to follow up. Norfolk Southern has completed documentation, has signed it, they've sent it to Genesee, Genesee's has received it, they've signed it, and it's transferred to Randy Midget at this point. So I confirmed with Mr. Woody as well, the status that, yeah, they're going to come out, they're going to do an inspection and move forward. And also on those pieces, you know, the developer has the bonds in place for those things, for a performance guarantee. So if the roads aren't right, he has the money to make it right, bring it up to standard. It's really his responsibility to do it, not mine, not the residents of Shingle Landing, but we've tried to make that gap, bridge that gap, and show, you know, good faith that, you know, we are good citizens and we are good community members and trying to make things right and fair with everybody. And that's long before we even got, came forward to even ask this for approval. As far as the units go, we did, we are modeling on someone after like Redknot in Edinburgh, which is more of a luxury-style apartments. They are going to have granite counters, hardwood cabinets, can lights, LED lighting, tile floors. You know, they're not linoleum, they're not Formica, they're not the cheapest cabinets I can find on Craigslist. It's just, you know, I mean, they're, they're good wholesome stuff and good solid things like that, so that's kind of the pieces of what it is. We will have a corporation, or maybe an LLC, probably be an LLC or an S corp, that will retain ownership of this property. Our intent is to hold this in a portfolio and manage the property as a whole, and manage it out through a realty company. So it's not, not something we're looking to flip or sell or do those sorts of things with. So I hope that gives you some overview of what we're looking at. As far as units, I don't know if it'll be all three-bedroom, all two-bedroom. I don't know what the market is, there's, there's no data in the market, and I'm a data person. So we'd probably build some three-bedrooms, do some advertising, see how many requests we get for twos, maybe we build some twos, maybe build some more threes, but it'd most likely be two- likely be two and three bedrooms. What mix, I, I really don't know yet, but that would be what we'd be targeting.
Question for you.
Sure.
Somebody made a comment about the garage, they're only going to be rented to the people that are actually living there, correct?
Well, that would be our full intent is to rent them those, but I'm not going to leave them vacant if somebody didn't, we'd offer them to, you know, most likely people in Shingle Landing, it'd be a, a good market for us to offer to as well in those pieces, but it would primarily be reserved for someone who's there. It's not set up as like a, just a mobile mini storage, but for some reason, if they didn't rent well, I would look to rent them in other avenues.
And this is all out of, you're LLC, not, you're not looking to get federal money or anything else for this?
No, this is all, there's no grants, there's no federal money, no local money, it's all, if you will, my money.
Any further questions for Mr. Miller?
Mr. Miller, this back corner here, you're still planning on having that community garden in the back corner there for growth and some agricultural work being done?
Yeah, like a, a horticultural area where you could do some growth or gardening and different things like that as well.
I had asked about the HOA, and, and that's a big ticket item with, with the Shingle Landing development. And as those folks, you know, are funding their HOA and, and when it is, when the road is taken over and adopted, they'll be managing that, so have you had any dialogue with, with the developers of Shingle Landing or the homeowners in reference to any, any amounts of, of dollars that would, that you would pay into their HOA or, or partner with them on that?
What we talked about at the meeting, I do believe we did talk about it briefly, and Commissioner Gilbert, I'm not exactly sure what the full discussion we had at that meeting was about, Mr. Woody would have the notes and the minutes from it, Ms. Don of Olivawal was there. But to the best of my knowledge, when we talked about it, and my comment would be the same tonight, you know, as well, basically the same. If there was a reason for that, that made sense where there was some maintenance or incurred cost of those sorts of things, I'm the businessman and I don't have a problem discussing it, but it, it wouldn't be a blank check. And, and I would be open discussing it. Now, if the roads were taken over by NC DOT, which in all fairness do look like they're structured to do that, the bonds are in place, there's really, even if the developer said, no, I'm not going to do it, basically just have to act on the performance bond and use the monies to do that. I don't see any reason why they wouldn't be, but if it wasn't taken over and it went back to the HOA, then I'd be willing to talk about it and those types of things.
Okay, and that's, that's really what I wanted, is just to, to understand that, that you are willing to, to make a fair and equitable contribution if, if that was, you know, part of...
On a financial level, I would, but as far as, you know, a architectural level or things like that, fully within the plans, I'd have no problem with that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Hyman, would you like to speak on his behalf?
I think Sam has covered it very well. I'm here for any technical questions that you might have. Again, it's a conceptual site plan that we plan to fully design and build if we get our rezoning and decide to move forward with construction, but I'd be glad to address any questions about that if you have any.
I think we're good, Mr. Hyman.
All right, thank you.
With that, I'll open the public hearing, and I will call Roxanne Crocker. Ms. Crocker, if you could state your name and address, please?
My name is Roxanne Crocker, I live at 134 Applewood Drive, it's in the Shingle Landing subdivision. I live in Phase One of Shingle Landing, and Shingle Landing was built as a custom home development. We signed covenants that specifically said the size of our homes, the fact that they would be on a crawl space, the fact that they would be aesthetically pleasing, we would have no apartments. For instance, if you built a garage, you couldn't have an apartment above it for rental. We wanted to keep it a really nice development. When Phase Two was approved, they approved those covenants with 1,800 square feet homes on a crawl space. We never thought we would have a multi-family project in our neighborhood, nor do we want one. It was zoned general business, not mixed residential, so we had no idea this was coming. We feel like it would decrease our property value to have renters in our neighborhood. People that rent, unfortunately, do not take care of the property as well as people that buy homes. So we're hoping that you will see that transient housing is not something that belongs in a development of custom homes. It certainly is not in harmony, and I appreciate that he's trying to do a really nice job of making it an aesthetically pleasing project, and that we do need some rental properties in Moyoc. We would just respectfully request that you not do it in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. She is the only one signed up for the public hearing, is there anyone else that would like to speak? With that, I will close the public hearing and open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, and we may need to open it back up to talk to Mr. Hyman. I'm trying to figure out which one of, where the accessory structure is.
To be attached to the, uh...
Garages?
Yeah. Commissioner Bowman, it's actually on the garages. I can't see it on here, but do you have the... Yeah, right where it is, cursor is, is where it would be. The UDO calls for an accessory structure being permitted attached in that way, and that's how it's, it's designed, so it would be separate from the other homes and those pieces, and it'd be next to the railroad tracks.
Bless you. Is it okay if I ask another question before we go into motion? Hearing what the, what was just said in the public comment, I guess the question I have at this point is, I don't know, Mr. Woody, you can answer that, or, or Sam, you can answer that, but the question came up, it would be, it would affect the cost of the homes. And I guess what I'm looking at is, how would that affect the cost any different than currently what we have right next to you there, the, the assisted living home there? Does that, I mean, would that affect it the same, or is it any worse or better, or?
I, I can give you my opinion, I mean, I'm not a qualified appraiser, but we do move and sell in order of, I would say approximately 200 properties a year, so I, I see my share of appraisals, and if you will, I've had a fair amount of OJT training with it. In comparison to properties, appraised values, you know, have to deal with what someone's willing to sell and what someone's willing to pay. And as far as that market goes, it's not necessarily going to change that market. It's based upon your square footages and a comparison of comparable sales. These aren't going to have sales to even justify or even enter into that comparison. These are held in one corporation as a whole corporation, so there's no sales that even enter the market. Additionally, they're a completely different sale. They're a mixed residential sale with an attached housing, which doesn't compare to a detached single family, so you can't compare those two things. Furthermore, to your point about being next door to assisted living, you know, you have an assisted living, you know, in a GB district next to it, so you're moving further away from those houses in another order, you, you're moving in the right direction. If this was on the other side of the assisted living, I could see and understand a mathematical argument for that. But in an area that's always been zoned GB before the very first house was ever built, which is a higher zoning classification, I mean, at this point, we really don't, it wouldn't even have to have this meeting if I wanted to build 160-unit hotel. Currently, a 40-unit-per-acre hotel is permissible on this property. You can imagine the traffic and the size and the scale of that, and that wouldn't even be something we'd be discussing. That would pretty much just go through planning, zoning, building permits, and we'd begin construction. Likewise, you know, next to the railroad tracks and use of those pieces, we could, we could simply put in a rock yard or do other things with that stuff, where we bring in bulk materials, transfer those things down to the site, and all that is permissible with the current use, too. Large-scale vehicle repair and automotive repair is all, all permissible on these things. So we're, we're really looking at something that is, we're moving away from the subdivision, we're moving towards the highway. We looked at the Kinley Horn study, which was done, and, you know, the, on the mega site, and said, in this region, within the radius of where this is, multi-family has a place and makes sense. So we're really trying to make sure we're, we're doing everything right in those pieces. So there are a lot, I would say, a lot less favorable uses that we could do with the property as well, that, that don't require a rezoning, too, in those elements. So we're, we're trying to make it, you know, fit in those pieces, and I really, in my professional opinion, don't see how it would affect appraisals or, or sales from that aspect.
I've got a question that came out of the public comment. On exterior maintenance, you guys would obviously be taking care of the exterior maintenance, since that wasn't concerned.
Yeah, it's all part of it, yeah, there's, there's no individual, it would be cut, all their grounds would be cut at the same time, everything would be mulched at the same time, everything would be done at the same time. We maintain other subdivisions, you know, from a quality of work perspective, you know, we can give you illustrations of numerous properties from here to Corrala that we maintain and manage.
Obviously, it's going to be in your best interest to keep it looking nice, so...
If we don't make it look nice, nobody wants to live there, you know, and obviously, if we're going to spend money on granite counters, tile floors, hardwood cabinets, you know, and a lot of nice amenities with those sorts of things, you know, we want to get a return on that. It's not a, an inexpensive endeavor, and it's not an inexpensive property to construct, you know. Likewise, just as easy, we could subdivide the property into three single-family lots and place modular homes on it, too. You know, we're not trying to go that path either, you know, so we're, we're really trying to do the best interest and make the nicest project and property we can.
I wanted to ask the question, you talked about the garage. Is it for a car?
Yeah, it would be for a car, it'd be approximately 12 feet in width and I'd say probably 22, 24 feet deep.
But it could also be used as a storage unit.
Sure, you know, a lot of times when you have an apartment, you know, or a condo like this, you don't have a place to put those things. Years ago, my aunt lived in a condominium community, and she had a detached garage in a bank, which is kind of where we, I got the idea from, you know, and that's where we kept our bicycles and things like that when we'd go visit Aunt Pat, and, you know, it was, it was nice for those sorts of things, because you, you're not going to store them in your living room, or you're going to try not to. So it's, it's probably going to be something of interest for those. I've also had employees over the years that have lived in apartments in Chesapeake and other, and, you know, they had a, a nice car or things like that, and made some sense. We also looked at this thing and said, from a transitional perspective, you know, we have a lot of single-family housing in Moyoc, and we have a very nice subdivision, I think Shingle Landing is a nice subdivision, but we also have an assisted living area with that, and I know people who have family members there and say, you know, I wish I had somewhere I could go that was closer, or move close to mom and dad, or mom needs to be in there but dad doesn't, and, you know, where does everybody live and how does that stuff work? So I, I think there'll be some, some definite collaboration between the two sites, should you approve this.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Mr. Chairman, in thinking through this and, and hearing the evidence and, or the information that was provided by Mr. Miller, and in all due respect to both you, Mr. Miller, and to the citizens or the residents of Shingle Landing, I would like to postpone this decision until we can have an expert appraiser look at this and give us some information if the applicant would be permissible. I don't know, Mr. Hyman, if you can speak to that, but the folks of Shingle Landing, that development has been through a whole lot since its conception, and I owe it to those folks to, to have that information and just, just to, you know, just a kind of a sanity check that, that this development, and it exceeds the expectations that other persons have tried to put a multi-family unit in, in this location, but I, I would ask that we postpone this decision until we can have an, an expert appraiser come in and, and speak to that. And I'll put that in a motion if, if the applicant is, if this will... Go ahead, Mr. Hyman.
I can't speak because I'm not a licensed appraiser either, but I have heard that same discussion many times in this meeting, and it has always boiled down to what Sam had just explained to you. This doesn't really have an impact pro or con because it's what you can sell it for, what you can buy it for, but I do, like I said, and I have heard it explained and hashed out in many meetings over my years of coming to this board and other boards also, that at the end, it, what gets put here typically does not really impact, especially since it's in competitive nature with the rest of the neighborhood, but, but like I say, I'm not a licensed appraiser.
The, the other comment, Commissioner Gilbert, that I would throw out there is that when an appraiser's going to come in, they have to have, this is a zoning request, we don't know what the final buildings are going to look like or even, I, I mean, we've got a rendition, but, but all the factors that go into an appraisal, I, I don't know that you could get there from here, i- if that makes sense. You know, typically, it's how's the interior built, you know, is it granite, is it, and, and this is all conceptual, so I...
And that's why I'm struggling with it.
I, I hear you because I've walked the streets in Shingle Landing and I've spoke to lots of happy people. But I'm, but I'm not, I don't know that that, that delaying this or getting another expert opinion is, number one, that we'll be able to or that it'll tell us anything of substance.
Mr. Miller, if I may, are, are you a, a real estate agent?
No, I'm not, I do own a real estate company. I separate myself from that.
Is anyone in your company a real estate agent or broker?
Yeah, we have a broker in charge, we have about eight different agents. I mean, it's, it's not a, Commissioner Bowman, that's right, I mean, you, you just can't make the comparison, it's kind of like comparing apples and oranges. It's not a, it, it'd be nice if things were clean and easy like that, but it's not an easy thing. You know, I think the things you have to, have to weigh and understand are, are we going to do what we're going to say we're going to do? Is it overall going to be better for the community as a whole? And is this the right spot to do it or not? You know, and I can tell you, we'll do everything that, we've done everything that everybody's asked of us in that meeting. You know, we stayed there, I stayed there well beyond any reasonable amount of time and answered questions as long as anybody wanted to ask. I gave my personal cell phone to everybody at that meeting and said, if you have any questions, please feel to call me. My address is 111 Currituck Commercial Drive, Suite B in Moyoc. Said, you're welcome to come over and give me any concerns with this. You know, we do own the property, we are going to do something with the property. You know, if it, if it isn't a mixed family or a multi-family like we're proposing, it will be one of the other alternatives. I mean, we, we do these sorts of things, this is what our, our business is, and we will use the highest and fullest use of the property within the rules and regulations that we have all agreed to by buying here and living here. I do the same thing that anybody expected me as well, but it's always been this, we're looking to go to a lower-level zoning, we're looking to do everything to do right and everything, said, what do you want us to do? How do you want us to do it? And that's what you have in front of you. We put up multiple renderings, we put up multiple ideas, you know, we had suggestions about modeling after the Redknot, how are you going to keep your rents up? We've, we've tried to address all those sorts of things. And, and I do understand that, you know, it's, it's challenging and we'll never, regardless of any outcome, no one, everyone is not always happy, but we will do what we say we'll do and we'll work hard to make sure this is favorable, as we've done with everything else that we do.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Commissioner Gilbert has put a motion on the floor.
I'll rescind my motion for continuance.
Well, and the comment I'll just make is, as a board, we're constantly seeing large developments come before, before us of, you know, hundreds of homes being built, and the big concerns with schools and taxing on our infrastructure utility, I mean, here we're looking at 16 buildings, and it's real close to the highway. I mean, I understand some of the concerns, but I'm also looking at... understand some of the concerns, but I'm also looking at it, too, it's, it's, it's right next to that assisted living home, close to the highway, 16, 16 units, not very big.
Not railroad tracks.
You know, and a railroad tax. I don't know how many homes are actually living, I mean, I, I wouldn't want to build next to a railroad track, so...
Five o'clock every morning. That's when it comes through.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move to approve PB 16-17, and as part of that conditional rezoning, I would like to have put in the requirements of the, the architecture design that was included as our packet as part of the requirements, that some semblance of that or a close approximation of that design be incorporated in any, any housing that is built on that property. And I believe that was the only recommend... Mr. Woody, was there another recommendation?
Outstanding TRC comments be addressed, and then just, just a reiteration of the number of units. But the architectural design was, was probably the one substantive recommendation.
And then would also say, a condition of approval that it consists of a 16-unit, no more than a 16-unit townhome with one accessory dwelling and 12 detached garages.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to old business. An ordinance of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 1 of the Code of Ordinances to provide for county authority board or commission member of compliance with Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 3 Code of Ethics. And with that, I'll hand the floor to Mr. McCree.
Mr. Chairman, this ordinance, proposed ordinance is back before you for its second reading. It passed its first reading, but under the general statutes, because it was not unanimous vote, it requires a second reading. It may pass by a simple majority vote tonight. The effect of the ordinance would be that it would provide that any members appointed to your boards, authority, or commissions would be required to comply with the same Code of Ethics that the Board of Commissioners is required to comply with. Prior boards felt like it was a good idea to try to establish some foundation upon which members of county boards could look to in order to help them understand their expectations with regard to their behavior and activity as members of your boards. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McCree.
Mr. McCree, these are the same ethics that we deal with here as commissioners?
Yes, exactly the same.
Any further questions? Open the floor for a motion.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Next agenda item will be, under new business, bridge resolution, and that is the resolution of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners supporting construction of the Mid-Currituck Bridge and its continued inclusion in the state transportation improvement plan. And if I could have Mr. Scanlon speak to that.
Yes, sir. Mr., excuse me, Mr. Chairman, this project has spent, gracious, a considerable amount of time, potentially 40 years, in the, in the environmental review process, and it is now prepared to move forward into the, the building permitting and construction phase. Previous boards have been on record, I think, on several times, passing similar resolutions in support of the project, and it was recommended to us that this board, if this is a project that still is a priority for the Currituck County, that this board would do a similar resolution supporting, excuse me, the RPO has already scored and ranked the project, so it is already in the state improvement, transportation improvements program. Funding has been identified. It is scheduled now to start moving again into that permitting process and into construction, and it's being recommended that the Board of Commissioners would consider passing a resolution, again, supported the project, that we could send to our elected delegation as we're going through transition with new grov- governor and, and a new staff at DOT, that we reiterate our support for the project just to, to reemphasize that element as it starts moving forward. And I'd be happy to answer any particular questions the commissioners may have about the project.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Does anyone have any questions? If not, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion that we take and we reaffirm our resolution supporting the construction of the Mid- County, Mid-Currituck County Bridge.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to board appointments, the Historic Preservation Commission Member Team Designations.
Item A under...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Apologies. Consider an act, missed one, my bad. Consider an action of, on resolution authorizing contract by CT Mechanical Incorporated and the County of Currituck.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recuse myself from the voting of this, since the company is the company that I own, and I don't feel like I should be involved with voting on this.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept his recusing himself, for Mr. Payment to recuse himself from this item.
I would second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion moved.
Come back.
It's going to be a while.
Do you have to come back? Mr. McCree?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, pursuant to 14-234, the North Carolina General Statutes, a public officer may not directly benefit from a contract that the officer is part of making or administering on behalf of the county, unless there is an exception. There is an exception in this case. In, in counties that have no municipality of 15,000 or more persons, a public officer may contract with the unit of government served by that public officer so long as the, the contract does not pay out $40,000, more than $40,000 over the course of a 12-month period, and there is a quarterly reporting requirement that must be publicly posted as to the amounts paid during each quarter. What is proposed tonight is a resolution that would authorize the county to enter into a contract with Commissioner Payments Company, CT Mechanical Incorporated, which does heating, air, and ventilation work. The county has used Commissioner Payments Company for a number of years, along with some, some other ones as well, but there are times when his, his services are required to keep the county's systems functioning and operational. The adoption, again, of this resolution would authorize the county manager to enter into a contract with Commissioner Payments Company in accordance with statute.
Thank you, Mr. McCree. I would open the floor for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve this.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to board appointments. The first one is the Historic Preservation Commission Member Term Designations.
Mr. Chairman, we've already had this...
Mr. Chairman, the, the board previously had adopted a slate of candidates. Per your rules and regulations, the Board of Commissioners also have to assign terms to those individuals, and so we, the staff has taken that slate and assigned staggering terms to them. So, although the slate has been approved, we're bringing back to you tonight for your consideration and approval, assigning terms to those individuals to serve on that board.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and read out the terms that we have consistently, or have agreed upon. For the board, Josh Bass to serve a two-year term, Horace Bell to serve a three-year term, Virginia Serpico, a three-year term, Mary Simmons, a four-year term, and Barbara Snowden, a four-year term.
And these are not to, uh, mean that this is the only term. This means this is just initial terms, so they're not all at the same time, as you said, and does not affect their full terms at any previous.
Yes, correct.
Well, I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Planning Board?
Mr. Chair, I do have an appointment for the Planning Board. I believe the application was emailed out to each board member. Have not had a chance to see if anybody had any questions regarding the application, but Timothy Thomas, it was my recommendation for the Planning Board.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like there are other appointments. Can we do them all as one?
We can.
Motion?
We can.
Okay.
Well, I have one. Well, finally got mine right. I'd like to bring Jeff O'Brien forward for the Planning Board. He's been a Currituck resident since the 70s and, and several businesses over that, that time period.
You have him.
Don't have one.
Stephen Pratt.
I haven't spoken to him.
Okay.
Is that all?
I can sense it's a point, but I don't think we're going to fail him.
That's correct. Any more for the Planning Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, a motion that we accept Timothy Thomas and Jeff O'Brien for Mr. White and Mr. Payments nominees for their Planning Board appointees.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Tourism Advisory Board?
I have a candidate to fill the seat presently occupied by Daniel Pennington. I believe I, I did not send out his application. He's actually serving on the library board and has a background in online or virtual advertisement. I believe I've talked to the majority of the board about him, and that would be Lee Dix.
Are there any more?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a Tourism Advisory Board appointee as, as well. I would like to appoint Suzanne Seriani. Her application has been on file for a little while. She resides in, in my district. She does work in the Outer Banks, and she's lived in the city for a while, so I'd like to nominate her for the Tourism Board.
Mr. Chairman, I...
Amend my, it, it's Keith Dix, not Lee.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the appointments of Mr. Dixon, Mrs. Seriani for the Tourism Board appointments.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Senior Senate Advisory Board?
Mr. Chair, I do have, I'd like to, Janet Lovell is finishing her first term. I'd like to reappointment for her second term. Just nominate her to, to fill the second term of that, please.
Are there any more?
I did not.
I don't have anybody at this time. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, so we'll accept the appointment that Mr. Payment has made for Janet Lovell. In that sense, that the other ones have not been replaced. They will continue to serve until a, a replacement appointee is designated.
Very good.
My motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Recreation Advisory Board?
Yeah, Paul Dunham.
I do not have anyone at this time. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Motion for approval.
Second. Questions for, oops, excuse me, Mr. Scanlon? Number five, permits and inspections. We had a discussion earlier in reference to item number five, that it's actually, we still have some type of record, you know, we're going to paper records.
This is a request under the State Public Records Retention Act, and this is a request to destroy paper records associated with some building permits in the past. It does not, we, we still are retaining the electronic records for that period.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it again.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Commissioners' Report. Mr. White?
Uh, not much tonight. I will not be here for the next meeting, so I'll put lots of good stuff on them, so you can saw it all before I get back. I'll be in New York skiing, so...
Fair enough.
I'll miss you guys.
Mr. Payment?
Last Saturday, Lower Currituck had a live burn. It's always open to the public. It went very successful, good training opportunity. Commissioner White made it out there with his son, and glad you come out to, to meet some of the firefighters and, and see what happens. There's another one coming up on the 18th. If any commissioners would like to, to come and see it, and the public's more than welcome to, to see what your volunteers do, how they, how they train and, and work with each other. And again, if you feel the need to support your community, the volunteer fire department's always looking for good individuals to come lend a hand, matter if it's just directing traffic, or getting water to the firefighters, or if you want to get your training done. Again, we're always looking for, um, throughout the whole county, and that's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gilbert?
I just want to share an acronym that we received or, or discussed at our retreat, which was OPAL. And it stands for Older People Active Living. So, with that being said, I gave it a lot of thought, and we have a tremendous amount of activities at our senior centers, and I would encourage those of you that are seasoned, are becoming seasoned like myself, to, to get engaged, get active. Go to the recreation center. We've got a, a group of seniors that play pickleball on Thursdays that, they could run circles around me, and they're probably, you know, 20-plus plus senior. So, I would encourage you to, to get active. Visit the senior centers, the recreation centers. There's programs that go on at the YMCA and, and throughout the county that we, as individuals, can become active. It is the month to wear red and, and be heart-healthy, so please keep that in mind. Second opportunity is the animals...
I had a cheeseburger yesterday. Sorry.
All right, so pickleball for you on Thursday. But two, um, there's opportunity at the animal shelter to come and volunteer. If you can't afford to, to own a pet, this is a great opportunity for you to go, play with the animals, walk them. You can, you can help the staff. It just, I mean, there's kittens, there's, there's sometimes exotic animals, and of course, you know, I was a little leery when I walked in and was checking out the exotic space that we have for, but it's like bunnies and monkeys and that sort of thing. I haven't seen any reptiles there yet, so, you know, until that happens, I'll continue to, to visit the exotic pet room, but, um, up until that time. But please take the time, go to the animal shelter. They would welcome anybody and everybody to come and walk a dog. We've got a couple days of good weather this week. Go exercise and, and walk, walk a dog, and, and just play with the kittens. That's all I have for tonight.
Mr. Beaumont?
You've got nothing now, do you?
I got nothing. Good, thanks.
Ms. Etheridge?
The Currituck Department of Social Service is actively recruiting individuals and families to become licensed foster parents, and they're planning on having a class this spring, so please contact the DSS for more information, and their number is 232-3083. And I'd like for the county also to put that on the county website.
Mr. Hall?
Well, I'd like to announce something that's dear to my heart, food. I'm sorry, I'm going to take, and I'm going to put a little cholesterol in this, and I'd like to announce a new event this year in Moayak. It's going to be at the Moayak RV Show at the Truck Center on March 12th, which is a Sunday, at 1:00 PM. It's not that, it's the fact that it's a chili cook-off. The Moayak Women's Club will be hosting this chili cook-off to support their various charities. Folks...
chili cook-off to support their various charities. Folks, if you've never been to one of these, it's a great place to smell and eat a lot of good food. So, if you get a chance and you're confident you want to test out your chili's cooking skills, there's no entry fee. There'll be some great prizes for those who enter, some great food for those who want to eat, and they'll have a regular judging event and a people's choice also. So, if you'd like to take and contact somebody from the Moayak Women's Club, the number they're using right now happens to be my wife's phone number, 232-0711. So, leave a message. Remember, it's my house, please be polite. And I thank you very much.
If I may, we had our board retreat a couple weekends ago. I did thank staff and commissioners at the retreat, but feel I need to do it again. Ms. Walton, Mr. Woody, Mr. Scanlon, Mr. McCree, a huge success by all accounts. Everyone came together well, worked together well. If I could pass along a many thanks to your staff, as well as you folks. I appreciate it very much. I'm sure the board does as well. To the board, thank you. We had a big agenda. We had a lot to get done, and we got it done. Had a few laughs along the way, and I do appreciate everyone really working hard that weekend and getting a lot of stuff done. So, thank you very much for that. County Manager's report?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. I would move to, move to closed session pursuant to GS 143 dash 318, that point 11A3, to consult with the county attorney and to preserve the attorney-client privilege regarding the matter, captioned Swan Beach Corolla LLC versus Currituck County.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously.